Twenty fifteen meeting of the Anarondle County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Peruca will lead the invocation this evening.
Mr. Chairman, by your leave, just a word of explanation before we say the prayer. I passed out to council and staff, and I'm holding up for the benefit of the audience, a copy of the great seal of the state of Maryland, and it contains the date sixteen thirty-two and the shields, the family shields of the Crossland and Calvert families, along with the state motto. And surrounding the shield is a Latin phrase on the outside, on the circle, on the border. And that phrase, translated from the Latin Vulgate, is, it says, "With favor wilt thou compass him as with a shield." And the hymn that's referred to, it's actually from Psalm five. It's the twelfth verse, which is the final verse of the fifth Psalm. And the complete verse says, "For thou, Lord, wilt bless the righteous." And so it's the righteous that the hymn refers to. And it says, "With favor wilt thou compass him as with a shield." So let us pray. But we are grateful that the founders of our state, our ancestors, acknowledged your authority and your standard of right and wrong, as the true standard of right and wrong, and called upon you and recognized that you will favor those who follow your law and follow your standard of righteousness and will protect them. Lord, we ask for that protection. And as we deliberate and conduct business before the citizenry and before you tonight, we ask for that favor. And we ask that we would be compassed and we would be favored with the shield of your protection. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chairman?
Mr. Grasso. Oh, wow. I totally messed that one up. I apologize. We'll repeat. Ladies, I apologize. My apologies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Much more gusto than that.
That was, it was. Absolutely. I got wrapped up in Mr. Peruca's history lesson and I completely lost my mind there for a minute. Very interesting.
That's a good thing.
It is, it is. That was very informative, Mr. Peruca, it was. Okay, moving on to the ethics statement. Madam Secretary, will you please read that first?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski, you have the mic.
Yes, I'd like to have Mr. Grasso come down. We have to recognize the Girl Scout troop in Odenton.
It's two-two-seven, is that correct, ladies? All right, fantastic. Thank you all for coming down tonight.
First of all, for the public that doesn't know exactly what's going on, these fine ladies were solicited, as far as I guess, a merit award or something for the Girl Scouts, to come clean up the environment. And of course, they couldn't pick a better place than North County, right on Marley Creek, than I slayed out there hours and hours, all summer long, trying to clean it up. So these young ladies, along with their leadership and their parents, come down to Marley Junior High School, and they went up and down the hill, removing car tires, everything, trash, huge truck tires, and they didn't complain one bit. And what you guys did is a really good thing, because everything up on that hill will eventually make its way down into the waterway, which eventually make its way into Marley Creek and would eventually wind up in front of John Grasso's house. You guys did a great job. I love you guys, man. And they've come out there. We've got plenty more projects. Actually, we're going to do another one on Hammerly Road. There's a whole bunch of stuff back there by the stream and everything. Congratulations, you guys, for being team players. Thank you.
Just to follow up with Mr. Grasso, they meet at Arkanduff Church, which is right up the road in Piney Orchard, lived down the street, and I had to talk with them earlier about government. I just want to thank you guys. Certainly, we're going to work on some other projects. And we're not going to read the citation, but we appreciate what you do. Public service is important at any age, and certainly, you're an example for everyone in the community. And you deserve another round of applause, and thank you.
Good work, staff. Thank you. Give me some love. Thank you. We got our hands dirty really good on the creek today, don't we, Rex? Thank you so much.
This time, we have invitation to audience, and we do have some folks who are signed up to speak first, before we open it up, the mic, to folks who are not signed up. So we'll start out with those that are signed up, and we will start off with, it looks like Louise Novo Chalado? I apologize. Maria Gomez, Jim Snyder, Joe Campbell, it looks like Joe Campbell, I think, Joe, and then Millard Snowden. Whenever you're ready, please state your name and address for the record, and then limit your remarks to two minutes. Thank you.
So my name is Louise Novo Chadlo. I'm here representing the Center of Help, Center de Ayuda. We are located at one-nine-zero-six, First Drive, Suite 2B, Annapolis, Maryland, two-one-four-zero-one. So myself and my son Bryce here, we come to represent the Hispanic and Latino population, as you all know, is a growing population, represents around seven percent of the population of Anarondle County and sixteen point eight percent of the population of the city of Annapolis. So at the Center of Help, we are a nonprofit organization, and our mission is to serve the Hispanic and Latinos, to ensure that they become self-sufficient and fully integrated in our community. We offer a variety of services. We have English as a second language classes. We offer case work to connect them to job opportunities. We also have a homework help and leadership program. He wants to speak too, I know. And we are asking for, to make sure that the county council, I'm sorry, reiterate the support that we applied for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. It's our citizenship immigration program that since we started, we have helped over a hundred and fifty people to become citizens. We have helped many more people with information about what to do to become a citizen and many other things. So please, if you guys can make sure that our voice is heard with the county council, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Gomez. I'm a volunteer at the Center of Help, and also a student of citizenship class. I have been helped with many different ways, with instructor Claudette, she's a very dedicated teacher, and many other people have. Thank you very much, and I hope you come to give the funds to the center. We really need their help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Mr. Snyder?
Jim Snyder, nine-four-five, Old County Road, Severna Park. On May sixth and eleventh, you heard much testimony regarding what should be added to the Anarondle County Public Schools budget. I would like to recommend an item for deletion, the position of the head of the AACP Public Information Office, which costs taxpayers more than $200,000 a year. Please note that I'm not recommending this cut because I believe that individual isn't doing his job. On the contrary, I'm recommending it because I believe that individual is doing his job very well. The problem is the job, not the individual. What have been the effects of having the AACPS PR position? First, the PR spokesman too often speaks on behalf of school board members. The public would be much better informed about AACPS if school board members spoke on behalf of themselves. Second, all public requests for information that could conceivably be controversial get channeled through the PR office. This makes public participation incredibly inefficient and intimidating, which also harms local Washington journalism. For example, I used to be able to ask for a copy of an AACPS report from the person who wrote the report. Now I have to go through an insane and intimidating process to get the same report via the PR office. Third, funneling all requests for information through our PR official makes local education reporters improperly dependent on that person for their livelihood, and results in that PR official almost always getting the last word in newspaper articles on controversial issues. No rational reporter will alienate a source on whom their livelihood depends. This type of problem is aggregated for nonpartisan public bodies such as our Board of Education because, by their nature, such bodies already lack competing sources of official information. Empowering a PR official in this information environment really adds fuel to the fire. Fourth, a position like this creates a very unfortunate revolving door incentives between reporters and the government officials they cover. The current AACPS PR official was hired after working for the leading local newspaper in our county. It harms the journalistic integrity of reporters if they hope they one day might get a top PR job from AACPS, including a fourfold increase in pay and more job security. Eliminating this PR position would eliminate that temptation. Fifth, it is outrageously expensive to charge the public $75 an hour for that PR official to provide the public with documents in response to Public Information Act requests. Most of those documents should either be posted online already, thus making a Public Information Act request unnecessary or inadequate.
Mr. Snyder, can you please summarize?
Yes. In summary, I'd like you to zero out this PR position. The money would be much better spent for other educational priorities. If you would like an authoritative backup for some of the problematic incentives described here, I'd encourage you to read the Society of Professional Journalists report, mediated access, education writers' perception of public information officers, media control efforts. If you would like a copy of this testimony, you may find it online.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Grasso?
Mr. Snyder, are we, and I was just talking to Councilman Fink over here. How much you say the salary was?
I'm talking about salary, benefits, and deferred compensation, over $200,000. He's one of the highest paid individuals in the county.
Okay, because the reason why I'm saying this is that I remember, two years ago, three years ago, the teachers were taking pay cuts, and then I soon found out that he went from $100,000 to $125,000. And when I confronted him about that, he turned around and he made a comment, well, I said, "So you got yourself a nice pay raise?" He says, "I didn't get a pay raise this year." I said, and it was in January when I talked to him, he said, "I got it in December." And that was $120,000, and you're telling me the whole cabaddle right now is at $200,000?
This is total compensation, the way the SEC defines it, which also includes deferred compensation.
Jesus, God. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
My name's Joe Campbell. I'm from three oh one Beach Grove Court, Millersville, Maryland. During the legislative process, many of you were looking for ways to save money, reduce spending, maintain services, save the bay, and everything else. And I'm here before you tonight to kind of give you a way to fulfill some of those promises. When gambling was approved by the voters, there was a big controversy when the final selections were made. Anarondle County was awarded a license at Maryland Live in Hanover at Arundel Mills Complex. Maryland Live is currently the largest and most profitable of all casinos in the state. But with that success, we encountered problems, crime, traffic, controversy that continues in that area. It became necessary to add a police substation at the mall. Anarondle County has received some financial benefit from the presence of the casino, but not enough. In nineteen sixty-three, Maryland had gambling here in Anarondle County, and we were one of two counties that had gambling. At that time, Anarondle County charged a license fee for each machine that was in Anarondle County. At that time, it was $300 per machine. By today's standards, that would now be $2,300 per machine. We don't have any licensing for slot machines currently or game tables in Anarondle County. If we were to use just $1,000 per machine, based on the number of tables and slot machines, we're looking at a revenue of about $4.1 million per year just for licensing fees. If we went with $2,000 a machine, we'd be looking at over $8 million a year. In addition to that revenue, Maryland state law and Anarondle County law allow for us to charge a 10% amusement tax. Amusement taxes are allowed on gambling machines. Currently, they're done on bingo machines and things of that nature. Looking at the revenue from Maryland Live, the definitions under the amusement tax, things mentioned, the use of a game of entertainment, we're entitled to 10% of the gross proceeds. Currently, just in this, during this physical year, Maryland Live has generated $199,300,000 in gross receipts.
Mr. Campbell, can you please summarize?
I'm sorry.
Your two minutes is up.
Anyway.
The dinger's not working. I apologize about that.
Anyway, basically, if we were to charge a licensing fee and take our 10% tax, we would have money to save the bay and help education.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Mr. Snowden?
This is about the Stormwater Act. And everybody wants a clean Chesapeake Bay, and it's a matter of fact of how we go about doing it. And Maryland already has a flush tax and gets millions of dollars from the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Fund. But due to the way our democratically-controlled legislature works, the money doesn't get used properly for it. So the democratically-controlled legislature in O'Malley, in their infinite wisdom, decided to create a fee, which is a tax called the Stormwater Act. But it only involves select counties and ballmers city to pay the fee, which Anarondle County has designated. The Stormwater Act divides our country, our county, into two factions, those living on the waterfront or near it, and those that live inland and away from the bodies of water. The majority of these inlands have nothing to do with the waterways. It's the people and companies on the waterfront or near that affect the waterways. Yet I saw a number of contractors at county council meetings, of contractors, engineers, and architects and others who stand to make millions of dollars from these planned projects. And yes, make no mistake, the property owners on or near the water will have their property values maintained or even increased off the backs of us inlanders, which are paying the majority of this fee. There is plenty of resentment for these councilmen that vote to keep this Stormwater Act alive, and it will show itself come next election. And then rebuttal to county, Councilman Grasso, who says he once supporting the Stormwater Act, but he also did not run, he ran unopposed within his party. And had he a Republican that ran against him, that was against the Stormwater Act, he might not have been as fortunate to win his seat. Like what happened between Dick Ladd and Mike Peruca is a prime example, where Dick Ladd was against it, I mean, was for the Stormwater Act, and Mike Peruca was against the Stormwater Act, and Mike Peruca won his seat. So beware to the other councilmen coming up for the next election that are going to favor this Stormwater fee. And I've just got one other thing to say. This Stormwater Act will not correct Marley Creek's pollution problem because Anarondle County's been dumping clay in there for years, and they've been dumping wastewater and using Marley Creek as a toilet by discharging all their wastewater into it from the pump station that's down the road. And this has been going on for years.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden.
That's all I got to say about it.
Appreciate it. Thank you all very much this evening. Is there anyone else who's not signed up who wishes to come down and speak at this time? Thank you. Ms. Johnson, when you're ready?
My name's Larry Barber. I live at seven-eight-eight-nine Poplar Grove Road in Severn, Maryland. I was going to testify on twenty-seven fifteen, but Councilman Grasso told me he was asked to pull that bill. The reason this thing came about is I'm a member of American Legion Post two-seventy-six and seven, which resides in Councilman Grasso's district. And several years ago, we wanted to tie into the county sewer, we're on septic. We couldn't because it was physically half a mile away. Now it is in front of our building, where the housing development's just put in here in the last several months, okay? A few years ago, to tie in physically, to dig the trench and so forth, we're in eighteen thousand bucks, now it's a neighborhood of forty thousand. And going through the process of trying to apply to tie in, we found out because our building was, it would be technically three-hundred-person occupancy, it'd be somewhere about $100,000 for the privilege of doing that. We haven't got that kind of money. So I was advised by the people in the county, folks that deal with this stuff, that they have legislation done. And since I happen to know John, he's my councilman, and I know him from, I'm run for state senate, I contacted him, he initiated the legislation for us. And we made it to encompass the veterans organizations. Now, the only veterans organization that have buildings are VFW and Legion. Right now, there are eight Legion posts, two are already on county sewer, so we're talking at most six. The VFW, of the ones in the, what's called District Six, two physically are inside Howard County, not an issue. One's getting ready to turn in their charter. There are only three VFWs that may be affected, including the one my friend Patrick and I are part of. So at most, we're talking nine locations, at the most. And two of them very likely are not going through because they're on sewer and they have their own wells. So I just want to make that known, so that apparently, Mr. Schu wants to review the thing. I'm not sure what he's going to review if he doesn't know those facts.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Enright?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I live on Huntwood Drive in Gamberlins. I'm the adjutant for post three oh four Annapolis VFW, and I endorse everything that Mr. Barber just said. There are four VFW posts in Anarondle County, that part of District Six. Our post in particular is on well and septic, and we're just, we're outside of the water hookup, so we can't do it anyway. This has minimal impact compared to all the other five oh one C, one through, we're nineteen, so one through nineteen. We've, we're just, you know, chaff amongst all the wheat, if you will. So our impact would be, would be zero, essentially. And we just want to be added into that fold, the five oh one Cs, because years and years down the, down the pike, that may all change, and we may need to hook up.
In the master water sewer plan, are you, is the property that you're referring to, is that in future service or planned service?
That I don't know. I can find out. I don't know.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you all very much. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box sixty-six thirty-four, Annapolis, Maryland. I would like to say thank you to all of the people who came tonight, you know, and expressed their concerns and asked you to address their grievances. I, of course, have come again to address, ask you to address my grievances. I sent you an email in which I, you know, I pointed out that, you know, as you know from the past, I feel very strongly that I do not receive equal protection under the law. You've heard me talk about the plots. I have given you a bazillion of them. This one is a two thousand and three plot. It shows the road, that's in red, and it shows the encroachments committed by each of my neighbors. That is, physically, they have extended their lawns and their yards onto my property, and they chase me off, and I'm excluded from my own use, you know, using my own land. And then I sent you an email with a very poor and incomplete spreadsheet showing how much, some of the revenue that the county could earn. For instance, you know about the neighbor with the septic tank. That's $2,500 a day, if you prosecute him under criminal prosecution for criminal trespass. The property next door, he's extended his front yard, four, five, six feet onto my property, that's another $2,500 a day. And the neighbor's down here, they put in flower beds and sidewalks and hanging baskets and stuff, that's another $2,500 a day. That doesn't count, they're parking their two vehicles, as you can see, the two vehicles parked side by side, completely blocked passage from Ralph Boulevard, you know, all along their property lines, so I don't get to use my own road. In addition to that, they park another car up here, and now, it's been really generous of them, they've moved their vehicles so that they only occupy the entire right lane. If you look at the numbers, you get into the millions of dollars. You could pay for a lot of community services if you only imposed...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The taxpayers of the county would be benefited dramatically if you imposed fair and reasonable penalties on people who are committing these crimes, and the people who aid them and who abet them, and allow them to go on year after year.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. Do you want a hard copy?
Sure, that's fine. If you give it to Ms. Jones, she'll make copies.
Okay. And then the other plot is the plot of this property here.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep my plastic board tonight.
Fair enough. Thank you, ma'am. Is there any item any councilman would like to place on the agenda? Mr. Grasso?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to pull out Bill twenty-seven, I believe, twenty-seven fifteen?
Yes, sir. Want to pull out Bill twenty-seven fifteen, and just give the administration just a little more diligence on, due diligence on this bill, and to see where the numbers are heading up.
Thank you. Any additional comments? May I have a motion at the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? So moved, Mr. Chair. Second. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of May fourth, sixth, seventh, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth.
The meetings were called to order by the chairman and opened with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May four, sixth, seventh, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteen, twenty-fifteen? So moved, Mr. Chair. Second. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of May four, sixth, seventh, eleventh, twelfth, thirteen, and fourteen, twenty-fifteen. Stand approved, is read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill fifty-two fifteen, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriation. Bill fifty-three fifteen, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, additional appropriation and transfers of funds.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution twenty-one fifteen, resolution supporting the study of body-worn digital recording devices for law enforcement officers. Resolution twenty-two fifteen, resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Clifton Larson Allen, LLP.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolutions numbered nineteen fifteen, twenty fifteen, twenty-two fifteen, and twenty-one fifteen out of order? So moved, Mr. Chair. Second. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolutions nineteen fifteen, twenty fifteen, twenty-two fifteen, and twenty-one fifteen out of order is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution nineteen fifteen.
Resolution confirming the appointments of members to serve on the personnel board for Anarondle County.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. Resolution nineteen fifteen confirms the appointments of John Mestakis and Alan Friedman to serve on the personnel board until November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Mestakis is a county employee with the fire department who was elected by his peers in the classified system. Mr. Friedman replaces Michael Malone, who resigned effective March twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen, because Mr. Malone was appointed state delegate. Mr. Friedman, I know, is in the audience, and Arlene Berlin from Boards and Commissions is here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Good to see you again, Mr. Friedman. Back in the chamber again. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on nineteen fifteen. Is there anyone signed up? If there's no one signed up to speak on this, if anybody would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Is there no one to oppose Mr. Friedman's appointment? Darn, we can hold it in for a while.
I was worried he was going to come up himself.
Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on resolution nineteen fifteen is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution twenty fifteen.
We're going to vote on these.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution nineteen fifteen. Resolution confirming the appointments of members to serve on the personnel board for Anarondle County.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution nineteen fifteen.
Mr. Grasso?
Gladly for, yay for Mr. Friedman.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution nineteen fifteen is passed.
Just like old times, Mr. Freeman got a seven-oh.
Resolution recognizing June 9, 2015 as Teal Tuesday, Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day.
Thank you. Mr. Perukka?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to recognize that, as the secretary said, June 9, 2015 is Teal Tuesday, and promote awareness for Tourette Syndrome. Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disorder, and a young lady named Carolyn Christian appeared before the council a couple of weeks ago. She's 15, she's from Severna Park. She's actually Miss Anne Arundel County, outstanding teen of 2015, and a National Tourette Syndrome Youth Ambassador. And she's one of my constituents from my district, and she and her family appeared here and asked us to support this resolution, which would encourage residents, all county residents, to raise awareness about Tourette Syndrome and show support to children and families who live with Tourette Syndrome. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Any comments from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. The county executive supports this resolution. Please, the council, I have asked Pam Jordan, who's the director of the Office of Aging and Disabilities, just to take a minute to discuss some of the county's efforts related to Tourette Syndrome.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, vice chairman, and all members of the council and staff. For the record, my name is Pam Jordan, Director of the Department of Aging and Disabilities. The Department of Aging and Disability supports resolution 2015. Tourette Syndrome is a neurological disorder that causes people to have involuntary tics, like sudden twitches, movements, or sounds that they'll do repeatedly. Tourette Syndrome can affect a person's quality of life, including peer relationships, education, risk-taking behaviors, health care use, and socioeconomic factors. Individuals with Tourette's Syndrome also have caregivers that are impacted by this. The Department of Aging and Disabilities offers a few programs to help caregivers and the people with Tourette Syndrome, the people they're caring for. Our respite care program gives caregivers support. When caregivers are rested and less stressed, they are able to provide better care. Another program we offer is the National Family Caregiver Support Program. When funds are available, and if applicable, this program provides financial assistance to caregivers to pay for respite care or supplemental services. This assistance is meant to enhance existing support programs and is for the caregiver's benefit. It's available to grandparents and other relatives that are not the parents and that may need a little extra help. Studies have shown that these services can reduce caregiver depression and then result in better care for the individual. As Teal Tuesday and wear teal ribbons to support this day. We will also support this on our Facebook page. I'm also aware that Ms. Christian has met with Chief Altamary, and he's looking forward to next steps in raising awareness on the police force. We'd like to also welcome Ms. Christian to join us for Disability Awareness Day and to visit the Commission on Disability Issues and the Area Aging Advisory Council. I thank the council for their time, and again, we support this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing on resolution 2015 at this time. Somebody wishing to speak?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman...
Are you Mr. Christian?
I'm Mr. Christian.
I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize.
No, it's okay. Mike Christian, Severna Park, Caroline's father, she just got out of cheer practice, so she couldn't make it down, or she would be here tonight. To Mr. Perukka, and I think there was four, Pruski, Mr. Fink, and Councilman Smith. Thanks for introducing the resolution. What this does for Caroline, it's not for her, she has Tourette's, but it actually does raise the awareness where, when she's out as a Tourette ambassador or representing the county, is Miss Anne Arundel County, she can show that the kids and teenagers with any kind of disability can be normal. I'm sure most people in the room have someone, a friend, loved one, or someone else that has something that keeps them either from school or life, just holds them back a little bit. So, this awareness is good for her, it's good for the community, and we appreciate your time getting the bill, the resolution, in front of everyone. Also, after kind of taking off the meeting a few weeks ago, we got on the governor's schedule, and I would be happy to say that Caroline met with Governor Hogan two weeks ago, and we informed his staff what the county council was doing, and they're going to also take it up at the state level as well. So, this is kind of good news for everyone, and we appreciate everyone's support and your vote, obviously, to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on resolution 2015. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2015.
Resolution recognizing June 9, 2015 as Teal Tuesday, Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 2015.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perukka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2015 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2215.
Resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Clifton Larson, LLP.
Thank you. I'm going to turn, actually, do I have to turn it over to Ms. Sutherland and let her have a few comments? This was done by me for behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The county charter requires me to audit the county every year, and it says it's subject to appropriation. We can hire an outside firm to do that work, which is exactly what the bond rating agencies require. They really don't care about my opinion, they want to see the opinion of an outside CPA firm. So, under the code, the chairman has to appoint an evaluation committee, which he did, and the committee was me and Julie Musog. And we have a proposal from Clifton Larson Allen to perform the audit for fiscal year 15 with two-year option to renew it, our option. The price is 5% less than last year's audit fee, so we are recommending that you approve retaining Clifton for the fiscal year 15 audit. Julie and I are then going to look at the bids that Baltimore County has gotten, which they won't publish those prices until August, and if we think that we can do better by putting it out for bid, we'll put it out for bid next year, but we'll evaluate that when we know how Baltimore County's RFP came out.
Fair enough.
So, we recommend that you pass this.
Any questions, Mr. Chair? Mr. Trumbauer?
So, Madam Auditor, you said that the price was 5% less than last year. Are you just a really shrewd bargainer?
That's it.
Okay. So, is no reduction in services or anything else?
No, there's no reduction in services. In fact, there are several fairly complex Gatsby pronouncements coming up for implementation, which is one of the reasons we want to retain Clifton, because of Keith Novak's expertise as the Office of Finance goes through some of those implementations.
Well done. Thank you.
Mr. Fink?
Just out of curiosity, Madam Auditor, what's the price on that? 5% less is...
The 15 audit price is 207,400. This 14 audit was 218,500.
Any additional questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. We'll open up the public hearing on resolution 2215. There's no one signed up to speak, but if anyone would like to come down and do that, please do so at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 2215 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2215.
Resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Clifton Larson Allen, LLP.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 2215.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink? Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perukka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2215 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2215.
Resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Clifton Larson, LLP.
Thank you. I'm going to turn, actually, do I have to turn it over to Ms. Sutherland and let her have a few comments? This was done by me for behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The county charter requires me to audit the county every year, and it says it's subject to appropriation. We can hire an outside firm to do that work, which is exactly what the bond rating agencies require. They really don't care about my opinion, they want to see the opinion of an outside CPA firm. So, under the code, the chairman has to appoint an evaluation committee, which he did, and the committee was me and Julie Musog. And we have a proposal from Clifton Larson Allen to perform the audit for fiscal year 15 with two-year option to renew it, our option. The price is 5% less than last year's audit fee, so we are recommending that you approve retaining Clifton for the fiscal year 15 audit. Julie and I are then going to look at the bids that Baltimore County has gotten, which they won't publish those prices until August, and if we think that we can do better by putting it out for bid, we'll put it out for bid next year, but we'll evaluate that when we know how Baltimore County's RFP came out.
Fair enough.
So, we recommend that you pass this.
Any questions, Mr. Chair? Mr. Trumbauer?
So, Madam Auditor, you said that the price was 5% less than last year. Are you just a really shrewd bargainer?
That's it.
Okay. So, is no reduction in services or anything else?
No, there's no reduction in services. In fact, there are several fairly complex Gatsby pronouncements coming up for implementation, which is one of the reasons we want to retain Clifton, because of Keith Novak's expertise as the Office of Finance goes through some of those implementations.
Okay. Well done. Thank you.
Mr. Fink?
Just out of curiosity, Madam Auditor, what's the price on that? 5% less is...
The 15 audit price is 207,400. This 14 audit was 218,500.
Any additional questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. We'll open up the public hearing on resolution 2215. There's no one signed up to speak, but if anyone would like to come down and do that, please do so at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 2215 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2215.
Resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of Clifton Larson Allen, LLP.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 2215.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perukka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2215 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 2215.
Resolution supporting the study of body-worn digital recording devices for law enforcement officers by the State of Maryland Commission regarding the implementation and use of body cameras by law enforcement officers.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski and I introduced this bill, a resolution. I'm going to turn this over to him for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you know, there's been a lot of talk in the public about use of body cameras and other things, and one of the things that came out in the General Assembly in House Bill 533 was to actually study the impact. We certainly know that our police officers here in the county, and we had testimony during the budget, have police cars that have 180,000 to 200,000 miles on it, and certainly, while body cameras may be an option, we need to fund their operating capital budget and get them up to speed first. But I do believe there is some merit in studying this issue. Certainly, there are federal funds that may come available, and this council may have to make a decision, but I think it's prudent, certainly, to support what the governor and the General Assembly passed to take a look at this issue. One of my big concerns, especially, and I hope that comes out with the study, is the legal ramifications. Certainly, there could be MPIA requests and other things that are put forward, and it's better to get it right before we go ahead and purchase something or decide whether they're in use. So, again, I think this study does that. It makes logical sense, and that's why I brought it forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I'll just, if you don't mind, just introduce, since my name's on it as well. The House Bill 533 was a bipartisan bill. Delegate Cluster, who's a Republican from Baltimore County and served as a police officer for a number of years, was a sponsor of the bill, as was Trent Kittleman, who's a delegate out of, Republican delegate out of Howard County, and then there's a number of other delegates on there from, like I said, from both parties, and my understanding is the governor just signed off on this within the last week. Mr. Fink?
This resolution is just supporting the idea of the study. The study's not been completed, right?
Correct. The study was just authorized in the House bill that Mr. Pruski referenced, 533. It's just, we're just putting it forward as a, sort of, to raise awareness of the issue in support of the concept of the commission and the study of it. We're not saying that we're necessarily supportive of everything the commission's going to do or what the outcomes are going to be, but we want to raise sort of awareness of the issue in support of the bill.
Mr. Perukka and then Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, I have not, I'm not familiar with the language of this bill or the history of it to any great degree, but I did hear some hearsay that I just wanted to mention, that the proposal, as it was designed, is designed, or could be interpreted, to protect police officers but not protect the rights of citizens with respect to this. Now, I know it's a complex issue, and I'm in favor of this resolution to study the issue, but I'm certainly hoping that the outcome of this is something that protects, provides measures of protection both for police and for civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. So, I understand that this is just supporting, like Councilman Fink said, the concept of the study, but is there a role in the state study for our county officials, whether it's sheriff or police or something?
I believe the police...
There's, on this commission, there are supposed to be representatives from the five largest local police departments.
Okay.
I...
Of which we are one.
Mr. Marzick might be able to chime in, but I presume that Anne Arundel County is one of those, because it is one of the largest.
But they're going to participate anyway, right?
Right, and there is a representative from Maryland Sheriff's Association, so I imagine that Sheriff Friedman will also be working with them on that. So, I do see some local role for this commission.
And then, the second question is, I noticed we're hearing and voting on this today. Is there some level of urgency on why we need to vote on it today?
Other than the fact that there's a slew of bills and resolutions in the next two meetings, we're just trying to...
Get it out of the way?
Yeah.
Well, it's certainly not very controversial to support a study that's being undertaken, so I don't think we'll have any problem.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Marzick? Read the title of 2115.
Resolution supporting the study of body-worn digital recording devices for law enforcement officers by the State of Maryland Commission regarding the implementation and use of body cameras by law enforcement officers.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 2115.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2115 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2315 as amended.
An ordinance concerning zoning assisted living facilities, community-based assisted living facilities, and group homes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Tom.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 2315 amends the definitions of assisted living facility and group home by adding community-based living facilities as a permitted use in all residential zoning districts. This will allow the county code to mirror the State Health General Article in defining assisted living facilities. The amended definition will allow qualified individuals within these currently unlicensed assisted living facilities to qualify for need-based subsidies. The county executive continues to support this bill as amended by the council at the last hearing. We have staff from Planning and Zoning, Office of Law, Aging and Disabilities, and the Health Department here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up the public hearing on Bill 26, I'm sorry, 2315. There's no one signed up to speak in advance. If anyone wishing to speak on 2315, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 2315 is now closed. And Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2815.
An emergency ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget revenue reserve fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're wondering, colleagues, why this bill may sound familiar, it's because we passed a similar one that would have put 7%, would have had the possibility of having up to 7% of operating funds in the rainy day fund, and to at least my surprise, that bill was vetoed. So, in the spirit of collaboration, I have come back with a 5% rainy day bill, which is what the county executive said that his preference was, and a note to my colleagues that this is emergency legislation, because in order for it to be in effect for the upcoming budget cycle, it needs to be in place before the start of the fiscal year. Do you have anything to add as my co-sponsor there, Mr. Chairman?
You covered it. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Chairman, members of the council, excuse me, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. The county executive supports revising the formula of the rainy day fund to 5% of the general fund, as we said at both the original hearing and in the veto message of the bill, but we do oppose the emergency nature of this bill. This bill is not necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, safety, excuse me, public peace, health, safety, and welfare. We committed to the council several months ago not to bring emergency bills before you unless they were necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare. The county executive has made a record investment in the rainy day fund in his fiscal year 2016 budget. He also committed to submitting a bill that would make the rainy day fund 5% of the general fund. Bill 2815 is premature, however, because the fiscal year 16 budget was not constructed to support a $65 million rainy day fund. Setting aside nearly $50 million, we believe puts the county on sound financial footing should there be a need to use this fund in fiscal year 2016. We have Julie Musog from the Office of Finance answering any questions the council may have.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have you read the auditor's blue letter, Mr. Marzick?
I have, yes.
And did you see the part where she references the bond rating agencies and what their, their goals would be for reserve fund?
Yes.
And so, the administration disagrees with that assessment?
No, I think the administration agrees that the bond rating agencies would love us to have as much money as possible in the rainy day fund. They would probably like us to have about $100 million or $150 million in the rainy day fund.
Which is not what this bill is asking for, of course.
Correct.
Right. And, again, you know, I'm struck by the opposition to this legislation based on the emergency attachment to this. I mean, we're, I think there were some bills introduced, the fourth quarter transfer bills that are also emergency, so those don't, those don't apply to the same philosophy that you just outlined.
Well, those bills have to be passed in order for the budget to be balanced.
Well, Madam Auditor disagrees, but, I mean, I think it, they have to be passed for it to be balanced the way you want, but it doesn't. I mean, your interpretation of emergency is just that, you know, your interpretation, I think that's fine. And if this, if this bill ultimately doesn't receive the five votes it's necessary to pass, you know, life goes on, and we may tackle this next year, but the practical implications are, just so my colleagues understand, that if, in fact, we are to designate any revenue in the FY '16 budget, if the rainy day fund is maxed out under the existing law, and that can no longer be the recipient of any extra dollars, the only thing we can put money into is the Board of Education budget, or the OPEB fund, or the CIO contingency account. So, that's honestly fine with me. I think that we should be funding our education budget more, and if this bill doesn't pass, that's, that's where I will be seeking to put any funds that we make available during the budget, but I will leave it to you to decide what is best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Anyway, Mr. Smith?
So, obviously, this is on the record, so the emergency designation, so going forward, this is essentially setting precedence for any future bills that have emergency on them when it comes to appropriations, so we should not anticipate any emergency legislation, hence going forward, if the legislation doesn't pass. Is that my understanding?[1584.21]